I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing I'd like to say, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our board meeting for April 27th, 2015. Our first order of business is our invocation. This is where the board observes a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand. Also during this moment of silence, a former member of this board passed away two, three days ago, and they buried him today, and it's Mr. Aaron Long. And he served 16 years on the Board of Supervisors, and also served as chair as probably, I guess, a couple of terms during that time.
In charge of the PSA.
In charge of the PSA, a public service authority. And he was laid to rest this afternoon. And so as we reflect on the business at hand, please keep Mr. Long's family in your thoughts and prayers. Then I said we'll be led in the pledge by the county.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Our next order of business is the presentation. And A, Rhine Rescue, Rhine Volunteer Rescue Squad, recognition of Sarah Kendall. Rhine Volunteer Rescue Squad recognized Sarah Kendall, Montgomery County Sheriff's dispatcher for her actions on March 8th, 2015 by obtaining additional information from a 9/11 call and relating this information to the Rhine Volunteer Rescue Squad, which helped save the life.
Captain Roop, are you gonna take that this evening?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Brown, Mr. Meadows, rest of the board. First off, I'd like to thank you all for letting us come here this evening and awarding Miss Kendall with this award. It takes a lot to do what we do. It's a big part from dispatch all the way down to us transporting to the hospital. We couldn't do it without them, so it's a great pleasure of ours to award that to her. We're also gonna submit a regional award for Ms. Kendall to the Regional Council. That'll be awarded sometime in June. Also, I'd like to thank all of y'all for y'all's support that y'all have shown us in the last four years that we've been operational. We couldn't do it without y'all, and we look forward to y'all's continued support throughout the rest of our existence.
Now, Mr. Colson.
Good afternoon. Nick Colson, Training Officer with Rhine Rescue. It's a great honor to be here today to be able to get this information put out there. I was on the call that day, and you know, dispatchers always go above and beyond. In this particular case, she went above and beyond. She gave us information as to his condition, what was going on, and because of this, I put the hospital on pre-order. And I told them as soon as I assessed the patient, I'd let them know that this heart attack was called about 10 minutes prior to normal. And that was because she elicited all this extra information, and she passed it on to us. The person I had that's gonna introduce herself and who's gonna present the award to her, you know, it'd mean a lot coming from us, but coming from him, I think it gonna mean a whole lot more. This is Mr. Nestor. He is a patient, but we ran that call that night. He's a good man. Number one, he's one of the very few good news stories that we have in rescue. And number two, he's one of the very few folks, rare, that came by, shake our hands, give us a hug, and say thank you. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce him, so he can do his honors.
Thank you.
And this is Mr. Woodell Nestor. We call him Woody.
What I would like to do, if I may, is to spend just a brief moment telling you a little bit about the circumstances.
Take your time.
Okay, thank you. I am retired from the Stellar One Bank, and my wife Kathy and I live in Rhine, Virginia. And Rhine, my wife is in the blue back there, and my son Steve and Michael over here taking pictures. Just wanted you to meet them as well. I've had a heart condition, underlying heart condition, for many, many years, since I was, about 20 years ago that I learned of it, and have been treated for it for that period. And back in January, I developed AFib, and apparently those two conditions together don't like each other. And so on March the 8th, I started having some difficulties breathing, quite a bit of difficulty breathing, and having some other unusual symptoms that I didn't recognize. And so Kathy called 911, and then I was visited very quickly by Nick Colson and his crew from the Rhine Rescue Squad. And they checked me out and quickly took me over to the ER at Ferriero Hospital. And once I was there, I guess they recognized my situation, the ER doctor decided to shock me. And I later discovered that that shock took me out of AFib, and so that was good. But, and I don't know if the shock caused this or not, but at that point, after having the shock, I coded, and my organs began to fail. And the cardiologist, my cardiologist was there, and he actually told my wife Kathy, call in the family, because he didn't think I was gonna make it. And so then shortly thereafter, I was airlifted to the Crohn Memorial Hospital, and there I stayed for three days in critical condition. Starting on the third day, I woke up on the third day, and so apparently I was starting to look a little better. And so on the fourth day, they moved me on to a step-down unit. And so I started rapidly improving then. And on the sixth day, they released me, and I went home. And I've been feeling great ever since. In fact, my face is a little red today because I was playing golf. So the doctors have told me I can do whatever I feel like doing. I'm not 100% yet, but boy, am I close, in my opinion. So about two days after I arrived home, my son Mike was still at the house, so I told him I wanted to go down to the Rescue Squad, and I wanted to see the people that helped me, because I didn't remember him too well that day. So we went down there, and Nick was there with his crew. First thing I did was give him a hug and thank him for his excellent service and prompt delivery of me to the hospital. And that was the end of the story, I thought. But then Nick told me, he said, "I'm not your hero." He said, "Your hero is Sarah Kendall, the dispatcher." He said she is the person that recognized the seriousness of my condition and took the swift action to direct them to my house as quick as possible. And so I have a lot of heroes now, but you know, in this particular case, I think Sarah, I really just got to meet her tonight. I didn't want to look her up, just like I did Nick, because I was afraid that I might mess up something that was planned for her like this tonight. So in any event, I'm just very grateful for what has happened. My family is grateful. And you know, like they said, you don't see many success stories like this. So at this time, I'd like to present Sarah with that award. So Sarah, would you please? I would. Our family and I, the Rhine Rescue Squad, and we just want to thank you for going above call of duty here. And I feel like I truly believe that my time was short that day. Truly believe I wouldn't be standing here giving this award if it wasn't for you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this is, it says, "A word is to Sarah Kendall for going above and beyond the call of duty and being an exceptional support to our team on March 8th, 2015. We couldn't do it without you."
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, again, I was a very small part of what happened that day. Just so thankful that the outcome is as well as it was, and I certainly appreciate this. Thank you for everybody at the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Sarah. And this is highly unusual, but I've known services, you had type of rash. Hadn't seen Sarah in a long time, but I'm gonna come down and hug you, girl.
Really?
Sarah, Sarah, after all this dispatching flight for many, many years ago, you've shown me 20.
That's right.
Thank you. That's so cool.
Thank you guys very much. We really, this is not something we do very often, but in talking with Neil and in talking with the board chair, we felt this was a very worthy thing, that we needed to recognize Sarah tonight, and also recognize the folks with the Rhine Volunteer Rescue Squad. As with all our volunteers, I've said in the fire and rescue meetings the last couple of months, you guys do things, there's no way I could do the things you do. The last couple of months, we've had just some horrific accidents and events that just have really tried, a lot of folks, and can't thank you enough for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Yes, yes.
Also, I'm sure glad, Woody, that they did that for you. I've known them for a good while also. We used to be at the beach at the same time and got to know each other very well. So Woody, I'm so pleased that it worked out the way it did. And to the Rescue Squad, we can't say enough good words for our Rescue Squad people, no matter where they are, and for the time that you give to help us get through. And many of us really have needed the Rescue Squad. I needed it before over in Blacksburg, and I found that, you know, people were, people are just good people, and I just thank you so much. And good luck, Woody, on that golf game, okay?
Other comments on the board?
Just ditto everything that's said. You know, it's just, it's remarkable to have people so committed to volunteering and saving lives and being there for people. It's something that's so very special, and not all communities have that. And so we're all grateful to you each and every day.
You're a special group of people, and we really do appreciate all that you do to make El County a special place to live and work. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Thanks, guys. Okay. Yeah. Box right there.
We have to pass the Kleenex.
Okay. Our next order of business is public address. We have four people signed up, and you have five minutes. And when you approach the podium area, you need to state your name and address for the record. And with the four people signed up, we'll start with Angela Stanton.
Oh my God, they took everybody when they left.
It's nice to see you all again. Angela Stanton from 2595 Spalding Road in Christiansburg. First, on behalf of Preserve the NRV and citizens in Montgomery County, I would like to thank you all for the support you have given residents of the county regarding the Mountain Valley Pipeline. I'm here tonight just to make a couple of requests. FERC recently published a notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement for the planned Mountain Valley Pipeline, a request for comments on environmental issues, and notice of public scoping meetings. And that document came out on April 17th. And specifically, one of the things that it actually states on the very first page of the document is that state and local government representatives should notify their constituents of the planned project and encourage them to comment on their areas of concern. If you've not done so, we would really appreciate if you would help us in our efforts in notifying residents of the upcoming scoping meeting in Montgomery County next week in Elliston and Eastern Montgomery High School at 7:00 on May 5th, and encourage them to attend, because that will be their opportunity to provide the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission with their concerns relative to the project. And we also hope as our representatives that you'll be in attendance at the meeting as well. More importantly, we respectfully request that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors send a letter to FERC requesting that they extend the deadline for scoping comments for the Mountain Valley Pipeline by an additional 90 days. Currently, the end of the scoping comment period is June 16th, 2015. We would like to extend that to September 16th, 2015. As you know, on February 18th, Mountain Valley Pipeline proposed alternate routes. Several of the alternatives traverse our county, as well as Craig, Roanoke, Franklin, and Pennsylvania counties in Virginia, as well as Monroe County in West Virginia. In their filing to FERC in February, MVP basically said that they created these alternative routes because in their various open house meetings and in learning about different things about the route that they had originally proposed, that they identified that there were some alternative routes that might help mitigate some of the concerns that had been raised at all the various forums that had occurred. And while open house meetings were hosted by MVP in Craig County on April 7th to provide information on the alternative routes for residents in that county, landowners on the newly identified routes in Montgomery County were not provided that opportunity. They didn't have an open house meeting to attend. They have not been able to discuss their properties with Mountain Valley Pipeline representatives. They were not afforded the opportunity to view detailed parcel maps to better understand the proposed location of the pipeline on their property. And since this opportunity was not provided to the residents along the alternative routes in Montgomery County, it seems only appropriate that the scoping period be extended so that these landowners have sufficient time to assess the potential effects of the alternative route in order to provide meaningful and detailed comments to the FERC that will provide them insights as they prepare their environmental impact statement for the project. Additionally, as you know, MVP has yet to divulge the actual location of the Swan compressor station. But in their most recent documents, they did a draft resource report that came out on April 15th, they still say the target location is somewhere near Pappos 220.5. That puts it in the Catawba area somewhere. I've been told it's near historic district. We received some information that there may have been a property transaction, but I don't have facts for that. But we really think that it's unfair for you as our county governing body and for us as residents to not be provided the information on the exact location of that compressor station, because it does have a direct impact on the county prior to the scoping meetings. In our opinion, since it's unlikely that we're gonna be told the exact location before next week, it only seems appropriate that the scoping comment period be extended so that residents of the county, as well as you as a governing body, have the opportunity to provide the FERC with information regarding the impacts of that compressor station on the location that's ultimately chosen. A fair, transparent, and thorough regulatory process demands that the citizens are provided the time and ability to present their concerns about the Mountain Valley Pipeline to FERC. Since FERC has the ability to use eminent domain for projects it deems in the public interest, it is critical that the public be allowed complete participation. The reality is, if the MVP is installed, it will be with us for decades, possibly in perpetuity. Given the recent announcement of new alternative pipeline routes in Montgomery County and the complexity of those routes, a 90-day extension of the scoping period is reasonable, and we believe necessary. It's only fair to give Montgomery County residents who are on the route additional time, so we respectfully request that you contact the FERC on behalf of the citizens of the county and simply ask if they would extend the comment period for 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred, I guess Landry?
Hello.
I guess I'm close, I don't know.
I'm Fred Alon, 2270 Mount Table Road. I'm here to talk about the Mountain Valley Project.
Please the mic up a little bit so we can...
So I emailed you last week, and some of you didn't respond to me. I just got your email. Thank you very much. It clarified a lot about your position, so my comments will be a lot shorter because of it. I just wanna reiterate that, what she just said, up to two weeks ago, I had no idea they had planned to run the pipeline right through my property, 100 feet from my house. So to me, it's like, it's out of nowhere. We need to know, I need to know what's going on. Having an extra 90 days, they made no effort to contact me at this point, MVP made no effort to contact me, so I just want, I don't think I would, I just don't wanna be rushing the whole thing. So it's a little upsetting about that. So thank you. That's all.
I'll be smart on this one. I'll just say Bruce, when you come up, you're gonna pronounce your last name. I'm not gonna chop that name up.
Yeah, I was gonna give you a challenge. My name is Bruce Zocklin. I live at 2424 Mount Table in Montgomery County. And I'm here to echo the comments of the two previous communicators. To say the Mountain Valley Pipeline has caused a certain limited degree of conflict is an understatement, somewhat analogous to saying that the Atlantic Ocean has a certain limited amount of water. A lot of it has been written about the pipeline, some of which I'm sure is even true. But certainly one thing that's very true is that the gas industry has spent a lot of money, millions of dollars, in promoting pipelines, including this one. So they have lots of money. We have ourselves, our citizens, and you, our elected officials. So I'm here to echo the request that's been given to you, that we would like to respectfully request that you write FERC and suggest that we have not had enough time to respond to this latest comment about where the compressor station would be, that it's even gonna be in Montgomery County. This is relatively new news. We, the citizens of this county, I think, are being asked to potentially risk their air, well, their environment through the air, soil, water, sound, and safety. And if we're gonna potentially risk our environment, we certainly want to make sure that we have an opportunity as a county to look at all facets of this, that say nothing about the safety aspects. I think that many of the people that I've talked to with regard to the pipeline, certainly pipeline representatives, seem to think that, they seem to be surprised at some of our concerns, the implication being that we all must be members of COB, that's Citizens Against Virtually Everything. But I don't think that's the case at all. I think what is really the case is that we as county citizens should decide what is progress and what is not. And I don't think that it's justified for the county to be herded along quickly and not allow you as our representatives and us as citizens to have the time needed to fully evaluate all the environmental impacts that are needed to determine whether or not this pipeline is justifying or not. So thank you.
Thank you. Linda Majors.
I'm Linda Majors. I live at 2620 Mount Table Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm here also to ask you to please write to FERC for an extension of the scoping period as Alternative 87, which goes down Coalbank Hollow and 93, that comes very close to me and other people, my neighbors on this river. These landowners on Alternative 87 and 93 didn't even know that their land was involved until February of 2015, and this was after the Mountain Valley Information Meetings in the fall of 2014. An example of the lack of information out there, this is an age when there's a lot of different ways of communicating. You can't just put something in the paper and have people all knowledgeable. I just talked to a landowner very close to me yesterday, and I asked her about surveying, because they're starting to send out letters on Mount Table Road. And she said, "No, yeah, we gave verbal permission for surveying." And she said, "Yeah, because they're not gonna build it here, because we live on karst." And I was like, wow. I had been at meetings when the MVP representative says karst is no problem for us, we can go under, around it, through it, we can engineer through it. So, you know, and just blown away all concerns. So that lack of knowledge of what MVP is thinking and doing, we need more time, because it's hard when you're trying to notify one person at a time, because it's not just like you can put something in the paper and everybody is totally up to speed on it. Another example that I wanted to bring up, a friend of mine, Oferson Spontemberg, lives in the, across the valley, across over the mountain from me, in the, near the North Fork Historical District. Now, as you remember, and I remember, the MVP representative said, we put these, they said, we put alternatives in 87 and other things, because we wanted to avoid the Newport Historical District, it's on the National Register of Historical Places. But yet the North Fork Historical District, which apparently is about nine miles long in the Catawba Valley, is not, has not been avoided. So that again shows you that MVP has just drawn lines on the map and not cared, not done any work. So it's up to the citizens to do all this work. And we need more time, because it's hard to get everybody motivated. Everybody is, you know, doing other things, and we're trying, but we need more time to give comments, because time for me has flown. And just trying to get people to navigate the process and make their comments is also a difficult thing, because it's not just like commenting to somebody or writing a letter. You have to go online, you have to write a letter that people are gonna read and pay attention to. Basically, that is, that's, those are my comments. And again, I'd like to reiterate, I support everything and everybody, every speaker before me has said, and in fact, they have pointed out my points that, you know, they didn't even know. So please, help us out and just give us some more time for scoping. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the list of all the individuals who have signed up, but if it's anyone in the audience at the current time who would like to address the board, not only about the Mountain Valley Pipeline, but any kind of issue involving Montgomery County government. Seeing no one coming forward with close up public address session, and then we can, if it's any action following that that we need to talk about, the public, I mean...
What are we doing with regard to what the speakers have...
Well, they had made some requests and their remarks that we write FERC to extend, I guess, the public comment period for 90 days. That completes the list of all the individuals who have signed up, but if it's anyone in the audience at the current time who would like to address the board, not only about the Mountain Valley Pipeline, but any kind of issue involving Montgomery County Government. Seeing no one coming forward with close-up public address session, and then we can, if it's any action following that, that we need to talk about, the public, I mean...
What are we doing with regard to what the speakers have...
Well, they had made some requests and their remarks that we write FERC and to extend, I guess, the public comment period for 90 days, period of 90 days, and...
And Bill, now that they're done with the budget season, I was thinking that we've got to take this back up before mid-June, when the cutoff date is, as far as public comment. And I think it's something important that we need to decide which route we're gonna take, and whether it's just stand on with the prior resolutions, stand on prior resolutions and say perhaps there might be one of the alternatives. But what they suggested and run it through Marty seems reasonable, and at least, especially with the alternatives and finding out that there's some landowners that weren't aware and haven't had the same opportunities that we had for the meeting in December, that seems reasonable to me. But I still would like to run it through Marty and make sure that we, that's something that we can legitimately...
Yeah, the way, you know, I see it is, is that, and a couple of y'all jumping here too, is that it doesn't cost us anything to request an extension. And we got everything to gain for our residents, is giving them more time and so forth, and but if that's the pleasure of this board to write, send a letter to FERC and ask for an extension...
Based on the reasons that Dr. Stanton expressed, namely, the alternative routes giving those landowners the opportunity to come to the meetings, I think that makes a lot of sense.
What I, what I, excuse me, what I'd like to ask is, as you mentioned earlier, if we can have the county attorney just write, look at things as well to make sure everything's cool with that, and we'll, we'll get a draft letter together for you to review. I did want to, I was gonna mention this under my county administrator report, but I did want to mention that the FERC scoping meeting is at Eastern Montgomery High School next Thursday, not this coming Thursday, but Thursday the 5th. Is it Tuesday?
Tuesday, Tuesday at 7:00.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tuesday at 7 o'clock. So, we will get into, I know we've got that on our website with the Mountain Valley Pipeline information, but we'll make sure everybody's aware of that as well.
Does it take a, wait, wait, go ahead.
I was gonna suggest, I think it would make sense, or be a little bit more effective, if the board passed a quick resolution, just basically stating, you know, ask the administrator, and I'll draft the letter for him, but administrator to send a letter requesting a 90-day extension on the scoping period, provide comments, for the reasons, in order to provide more time for the property owners who are now finding out that alternate routes that were just proposed, I believe in February, you know, they need more time to be able to provide comments.
What you said, it would be probably more appropriate for us to draft a quick resolution.
I think just a simple motion.
Yeah, motion to it.
Chris was on the way doing it.
The board supervisors has taken an action request, 90 days.
Still move whatever Marty said.
So move whatever he said. You got a motion and a second, whatever Marty said. Any further discussion on it? Will the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
And it's whatever you said, Marty, it passed, okay?
We'll get it out tomorrow. Bill, and after the FERC meeting that's coming up next week, perhaps we should put it on our agenda to start in, maybe the first week meeting in May, to try to discuss what we're gonna do on the pipeline and put it on the agenda.
What can we do?
And we're incredibly limited. It's not a local decision at all, and whether we ask FERC to adopt, perhaps the route typically, I'm calling the Craig County Route, which avoids most of Montgomery County, still comes through parts of it, maybe something that this board decides to do, but still in opposition, because I still have yet to hear anything from the pipeline folks saying that there's any economic benefit to Montgomery County or even our region, rather than more of an economic impact. But if we're not gonna do that, and we're simply gonna stand on a resident, pass a resolution, that may be an option that this board wants to do, but whatever, we're facing a real deadline potentially. And in my mind, we need to, I think we will have more impact potentially to get it out of some of the residential areas. And again, I'm not saying that by passing a resolution, it's gonna change everything that FERC wants to do, but it might get it out of Preston Forest, Brush Mountain Estates, and into some more rural areas and affect fewer of our citizens.
Come on.
Go ahead. You were gonna say something.
Listening to Chris now, what, I wanted to ask Mr. Meadows, when are they supposed to come back and give us an update?
Second meeting in May.
Second meeting in May.
So, they'll be here at the second board meeting in May for an update on where the project stands. So, we'll make sure everybody knows that as well, that's the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
I'd be fine talking about it as soon as they come back and give us an update. I mean, I just don't know what, what we can do. I mean, maybe we can have a meeting and talk about what we can do, which is gonna be very brief, because they're gonna say nothing. But, and I understand, but it's, we're just, we're severely limited in this situation. I mean, we can, and we've already passed a resolution in opposition to the pipeline, as currently proposed, I think it was, but we still don't know. And the last time they were here, I asked the EQT Next Era representatives, like, are we gonna get fewer or more options as time goes on? He said we're gonna get more. So, it's just gonna become a spider web of things until, I mean, they're not even giving us straight answers, so I mean, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Go ahead, Mr. Creed.
I would say, you know, they seem to have found time for the places that they know it's not going to have a lot of meetings, so, such as Floyd and some places in Rocky Mountain and stuff. So, if they've got the time to spend on the places that they're not going, and I absolutely believe they know where it's not going, and, but that's where they seem to won't be wanting to have the meetings at, because then suddenly they'll go away and everybody there will be hunky-dory, and they've got us to bide our time until it happens, and then we're S.O.L. That's my say on leaving.
One thing that maybe would be a good idea is the first meeting in May is to have a work session and talk about what we're gonna ask. I'd be fine with that, but I just don't know, there's no actions that we can necessarily take right now.
Well, I understand what you're saying, maybe it, it might be better to wait until that second meeting in May is to see, to hear from them and ask them questions, instead of, you know, like, putting it on before.
And I understand, but so far, we've been to two meetings, and as far as the answers go, I didn't hear any, I mean, Matt asked a bunch of questions, I think all of them asked, and there were a whole lot of dancing going on, but not a lot of actual answers to our questions. I don't have a problem taking it up on the second, but I would want to stick, and maybe we don't propose, we don't say, "We're opposed to it, but we would like to see it go here or here," will be, that may be something that we don't want to do, but from my perspective, I think we do need to try to do our best to help as many of our citizens. I've said this before, this is not something that's helped in my district, or affecting my district, but you've talked about the seven chambers, beating heart, and when one of them isn't functioning properly, then the whole heart isn't functioning. And so, I'm willing to listen to what y'all have to say, but I do think that we need to consider at least endorsing, and again, I stand on what we said on the 26th, without approving of this line going through our area, but perhaps saying, this is the least bad situation that we can, we can accept.
I understand what you're saying, and my point of view is that I don't mind telling them and stating, "Well, we don't want it there." Okay, but I'm not gonna say, "Move it over here on this guy's property, or move it here, and let them go out and find another location."
And I agree with that, and I think we went over this last session, I'm not expecting the county staff to come up with a new route line and say it goes through one person, but we do have alternative routes that have been proposed by them, and that could lessen the impact on some of our citizens.
All they gotta do is go out and look for them themselves, you know, not for us to direct them to Farmer Jones's property, and then he's gonna be angry at this board, and how do we go, it's gonna be, some people's gonna be angry, so my thoughts is, is that we tell them that we do not prefer it running through this densely populated area, and but look for some other alternatives, don't have us look for them and endorse them, but let them find them themselves, or just move it somewhere else, to another county.
Move it somewhere else.
Other comments?
I just have a clarification, so are we, are we doing Matt's suggestion of the first meeting in May, thinking up questions, or are we just gonna wait till the second meeting in May when they give us the update?
The answer is that we would probably add a work session to the first May meeting, if that's the consensus of the chair and vice chair, have a work session on the first May meeting to discuss what the topics may be for the group when they come in, because if we can get a list of those items, and I can get them to the MVP folks, at least gives them the opportunity to be prepared to answer at least those questions at the meeting that night.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
It's okay with me.
We're doing that.
Okay, we're good.
I'm not sure, give them an opportunity that they're gonna answer anything, but nevertheless, let's talk about what we want, some answers, our citizens want some answers.
Next item is our, we have an addendum, Mr. Meadows?
Yes, sir, we do not.
See, no addendum, consent agenda.
So...
Have a motion and a second for the passage of our consent agenda, is it any discussion, any items? Will the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is into work session, be it resolved, the board of supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following, registrar, decertification of win voting machines. They didn't motion, I mean, a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second to go into work session, will the clerk please call roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
We're in work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this evening we have registrar works with us to discuss with us a recent development from the state electoral board that has created some issues for us in the county, and Randy, welcome this evening.
Thank you so very much, Chairman Brown, board members, and Mr. Meadows. I'd like to start out by giving the history to the win vote machine. We purchased these machines back in 2005 using Hallow, which is the Help America Vote Act monies. It was all federal money, and it cost about $215,000 for the 115 machines that we bought at that time. There were six different machines available to us that were certified by state board, and we felt that the win vote machine was the newest technology, had the most offer for us, and so we went with that particular selection on it. In 2007, the General Assembly actually questioned the use of DREs in the state to begin with, and especially questioned the wireless function on the win vote machines. The state board of elections, the secretary at that time, Ms. Nancy Rodriguez, did a study on the machines and actually convinced the General Assembly at that time that the wireless function was fine, and that it was only functioning whenever they started up the machines first thing in the morning, so they could communicate with each other and start up using just one master machine. And then, in the evening, whenever they shut down, they were able to collect the information from all of the machines into one master machine and give us our total count at the end of the day. So, in 2007, the issue of the wireless thing pretty much went away at that point. Then, in 2009, the General Assembly decided that we, they would not allow us to purchase any more DREs. So, from 2009 on, we've been dealing with the win vote machines. And soon after that, the secretary of the state board at that time, Mr. Don Palmer, suggested to every locality around the state to start looking at switching to the optical scan machines as quickly as possible, and try to get it done prior to the presidential election in 2016. We took that to heart here in Montgomery County, and the electoral board and I started looking at options that were out there for us. And once we selected the machine we were happy with, then we took a plan to, Mr. Meadows, and suggested that we try to do the purchase of these machines over a three-year period. That way, the locality would not be stuck with a whole lot of money out at one time. And at the time that we asked for this, obviously, there were a lot of other things going on in the county, so we all agreed that this was a pretty good approach here thing. Now, we have gone through two fiscal years and purchased two-thirds of our machines. The last third will be purchased this July, and then we'll have enough of the OVO machines, which I have located over here to the left, that'll be in all of our 25 precincts. The, we had planned from the very beginning, once we started switching over to the optical scan machines, to use our win vote machines for people with disabilities. That's what they were originally designed for, they have earphones with them, they have the audio ballot, they have, you know, it's easy to transport out for curbside voting, and people that use this machine for curbside voting love it. And they relied on it heavily, and so our numbers of people voting outside the polls has gone up as a result of the ease of using the machines. So, our plans were to use these machines for many, many years. We had 115 of them, and when you only had to have one for every precinct, then, you know, you got 25 there, and they're gonna last for quite a while with 115 machines. So, we were trying to save the county money, to put it out that way, because when we got the OVOs, we knew there was another option for people with disabilities, and it's the Unison OVI that we're asking for funding for now. But we were hoping to put that off for quite a few years before we switched to it, by using the win vote machines. What happened with the win vote machines was that in the election, November election of 2014, there were some issues, especially down in Virginia Beach, because the dial old TSX machines they had down there were not calibrated correctly. So, whenever a person pushed a particular name for a candidate they wanted to vote for, the other candidate's name lit up. And so, they had to cancel their first vote and keep going back and forth to try to correct that. If Virginia Beach had gone to every machine prior to the election, during the logic and accuracy testing, they would have found that out, and been able to correct the problem with each of the machines and calibrate it properly, but they didn't. They decided to go to check, you know, check a few of them, if it worked fine, then the rest of them would be fine, and as a result, they ended up with a lot of problems. And they had to shut down, I think, 26 machines in the precincts down there because of the calibration errors. But that led to the state board of elections research into all the other machines. Those of us with win votes had no idea that the win vote machine was being looked at. On April the 1st, we received an email after 5 o'clock in the afternoon that the state board of elections had met and that they were going to... the State Board of Elections had met and that they were going to start a public, or set up a public hearing on the decertification of the win vote machine. So, um, that obviously caught us off guard. The vendor didn't know that they were doing it, uh, because the vendor didn't even get contacted until 9:30 that night on April the 1st. Well, on April the 14th, they decertified the machines. So we were confronted with quite a dilemma because we had 115 machines. Now, we're fortunate, we don't have a primary. Now, there are 20 other localities in the state of Virginia that utilize this machine and they have a primary. And, um, they have to make a lot of big decisions between now and time for the primary as far as whether to purchase the machines, whether to lease the machines, uh, can they borrow machines from other localities and things like that to make it happen. So we fortunately have between now and November, uh, to be able to make the, uh, the switch. Now, when I say November, we need the machines, the, the OVIs as soon as possible so that we can get familiar with them. Because they go about process a little bit different because, um, they have a 15-inch screen on and they also have a handheld, uh, uh, thing where you can, the person with disabilities can use the little hand device to be able to move the thing around on the 15-inch screen and, um, be able to mark their ballots that way, just like the ballots that we would mark on our optical scan machine. Then once they have selected their candidates, then they hit the prick button and they'll print out a, uh, paper ballot and, uh, for the way that they have actually wanted it to be printed out. They can look at it because it has not only listed on the ballot the names of the people they voted for, it also has barcodes at the top so that whenever they put it in the OVO machine over here, it's read like everybody else's ballots. So their ballots are treated just like everybody else's. So the people with disabilities aren't treated any differently than anybody else, uh, in the county. So that's why we're having to switch because of what the State Board of Elections is, State Board of Elections, I'm sorry, it's the Department of Elections now, uh, in Richmond, has decided to do with the win vote machines. And I wish we could've stayed with the win votes because they're perfect for our people with disabilities, but they, uh, said that they don't trust them and as a result, they've decertified them. And so the only option we have now is to get the new machines for people with disabilities. So, uh, your help is appreciated in making this happen and if I can answer any questions. Also, behind me is my Electoral Board. We have Mr. Chairman and Mr. Dean Dally. Uh, the Vice Chairman is Mr. Fred McKenzie and the Secretary is Ms. Carol Williams. And they're here in case you all have questions about, uh, the process and, and what we've decided to do. I brought up both the OVO, the Unison OVO machine, which we are taking out into our precincts now. Two-thirds of our precincts used them last November and the other third will have it ready this November. So we will have actually met the schedule that the Secretary of the State Board, Don Palmer, wanted when he first brought it up. And we're one of the few localities, thanks to you all and Mr. Meadows, to make this happen. So, um, you know, again, thank you for, for doing that. But I also brought up the win vote machine. One of the issues that the people brought up down there was that, and what happened to it on that, uh, November evening, was that there was a person in one of the precincts as they were starting up the machines that night, or that morning, excuse me, that morning. And, um, he had his cellphone up and he was hooking on to a wifi thing to be able to get music through his cellphone. And they said it was able to hook in to the wifi that came from the win vote machines. Now, I've tried it down in my office and, um, I had one of my staff members sit there with me and we tried everything we could to get this particular machine to be able to be able to detect it on my smartphone. And I couldn't and this type of thing. So, um, I can only guess that they were able to test it in a laboratory setting and be able to do it that way, but, um, I just know if, you know, if we couldn't do it, we couldn't detect the wifi that was on it. But I brought it up in case you all had any questions about it. I also brought the OVO so that if you all wanted to vote on it tonight, since some, I think the majority, uh, majority of you have probably devoted on one. Uh, well, you haven't...
I haven't voted.
Okay. Well, then, uh, but if you wanted to, we could have you vote on it tonight. Uh, I have, we have a test ballots made up and then you all can do that. But again, I don't wanna put you on the spot. You don't have to do that if you don't want to, but, but, um, I wanted to make it available to you in case you wanted to.
Questions?
Well, I just want, okay. All right, so how, Randy, how many of these, um, do we need, um, to cover 25 precincts for the disabled, um, that come?
I'm asking for 30. Uh, and the reason for that is that, um, that you always need to have extras just in case one of the others fails and you need to, to take it out. But also, uh, I'll probably use two of them in the cap because we'll use that as a, like a ballot on demand so that when a person comes in and votes on, uh, we only have to pay for the ballots they actually print out. Um, uh, that way I don't have to buy all these extra ballots in order to, um, uh, for the people at the cap to be able to, you know, to vote and that type of thing. Because, uh, this coming November, we're gonna have 20, let's see, 30 ballot styles. And that's, you know, I've gone through and counted up how many ballot styles, you know, how many of each ballot style we need. I've got that number and stuff, but, uh, uh, you know, those numbers are constantly changing and stuff with it. So you always wanna make sure you have enough ballots if nothing else. Uh, because, uh, what happened down in Chesterfield back during the primary, uh, many, many years ago in the 2008 presidential year, they ran out of ballots and it was, uh, not a precinct. So I don't wanna end up with that, so what happened with them. So, uh, but 30 machines, there'll be probably two at the precinct, uh, at the cap. And then, um, on a presidential election, uh, just like with the machine, the OVO machines, I'll probably end up having to put a couple at other precincts just because of the numbers of people that may show up in a presidential.
Now, Randy, one question I wanted to just make sure we got clarified is, I know that, and I appreciate you mentioning earlier that we had, but we had been budgeting 70-some-thousand a year for the past two years. We've also got that 70-some-thousand in the upcoming year's budget as well. Can that money be used to offset this 128 or is that buying different machines?
That's buying different machines. Uh, the OVIs are dedicated just to, uh, uh, the people with disabilities.
Okay.
And it prints off a ballot, it doesn't act as a, um, uh, no, it doesn't record the results of that like the OVO does.
So, so the money that's in the budget is to buy more of those, right?
Yes, buy more of those.
Okay, that's all right. Just wanted to make sure.
And you would need this additional $128,000 to replace the win vote machines?
Yes.
Okay, you know, when I, when I look at this list, Mr. Meadows, just, I mean...
It's what you emailed me the other day.
Yeah, looking at this list and it says 10 Sip and Puff disposable mouthpieces. I'm saying, I thought this was a breathalyzer when I looked at it, something that you test drunk drivers on or something.
Yeah, uh, with, uh, each one of the sip and puff, um, devices along the machines cost you $450 apiece. And so that would be, if you had one for each machine, it would add up to quite a bit of money. So what we have done, since we don't know how many people out there are gonna actually need the sip and puff, uh, accessory, we got two, we asked for two of them. And our person who drives around all of the precincts will have those, uh, and be able to drive them to that precinct until we can get a real good feel for how much we'll ever need it. And so we've only got two of those in there and then we've got 10 mouthpieces and they're, they're only a one-use type of thing.
Disposable.
Use it and yet throw it away. So, um, that's, and I only did 10 of those just to give us a stop for something and, um, uh, because I don't know really how many quadriplegics that we'll actually have out there that'll actually have to come in and vote until we actually do this, because we didn't have that accessory with the win vote machines.
Do you have any idea what's the lifespan is on these machines?
No, sir. Uh, truthfully tell you, I, I don't know. At most of the time, you'll see that people will tell you 10 years and that's about it because technology changes so rapidly and stuff and, uh, uh, but I, you know, I, I can't tell you exactly how long it will be. Now, we've got the most modern of all of the machines that are out there. And again, your question about whether you could combine them, I know, I think you had a question about getting, getting one that has both, uh, things as part of it. There's only one machine out there that has both the, uh, disability thing with that of, uh, the regular counter and so forth. And that's the Dominion machine. Uh, the problem with that is twofold. Uh, while a person with a disability is voting on the machine, people can't put their ballots into the machine. So that delays people being able to do their ballots. And the last thing you want is on a presidential election, they have a long line. So you wanna be able to make sure that you have people going all the time to be able to do that. And it takes a person with a disability a little longer to mark their ballot and deal with that than the average voter. So that's why you don't, you know, that type of machine, it also is as big as a tank. And, um, I couldn't get them in my carts that we transport the, the machines in. So, um, this particular machine was the best for us and, um, it fits in our carts and we can actually fit two of these in there in case we need to, uh, you know, to take two of the OVOs out. And I see especially over in E3 where the, uh, Virginia Tech students are for the presidential election, you know, they always show up for the presidential elections. And so, uh, we'll have two machines over there and that will actually speed the process up and be able to get through it.
One other question, I'm sorry. Uh, one other question on the old win vote machines. Do you think there might be any opportunity to surplus those and is, is anybody across the country still using those that we might could get some?
No, because they've been pushing everybody to get away from the DRE so there's not much out there. One of the, I, I've already went to the IT department and went to tourism and asked that they could use the actual monitors themselves because they are essentially a touchscreen, um, you know, laptop type thing. And, um, both of them are looking at ways that they could possibly use them. Another option is to send them to the schools because all you have to do with these is actually add a little bit more memory to them and, uh, so that you can go from Windows XP up to, you know, another thing of Windows and add a little bit of hard drive in there to give it more space for the programs they want on it. And it could be just like a laptop, I mean, that type of thing. So, uh, if nothing else, we could, you know, give them to the schools and let them look at being able to, um...
Use for...
Use them as well. So I've been trying to think of things that people can use it because you don't wanna, um, you know, just throw these things out if you can help it. Now, I will use the, um, shell that's here because I will use, I would put the OVIs in those at the polling places because a person can put their wheelchair underneath there and be able to operate the machine and everything from that. And, um, it's a good way to keep it, uh, privacy and stuff because you've got the, uh, things on the side so they, um, can vote that way. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, what's the warranty on these, uh, machines or do you have a service agreement on them?
You have a service agreement granted on them.
And, and when you initially get them, is they 12 months or 24 months?
It's a year.
It's a year's warranty?
Yes, a year's warranty.
And then you, uh, from after that year, then it's a service agreement that you...
Yes.
How expensive is that, like the, each year?
It runs about 50 bucks or, I don't know, I think it's about 75 bucks, uh, a machine.
Ooh.
But we're coming down from, we had 115 that you were paying that same amount for and we're coming down to, um, a lot less of the OVOs. So that will go down a little bit.
Randy, you might check, uh, rumor has it that there's a primary on the 2nd and then another primary on the 9th. Maybe the Republican and Democratic parties might buy a couple of those machines to calculate their, uh, the voting instead of having to do paper ballots on the 2nd and the 9th. Maybe one of the parties might buy it, but I see Dean shaking his head.
But, uh, again, if they can be used, we want them to be used because it's, uh, they're still good machines. We've never had any issues with the win vote machines. They've always worked perfectly for us. So, uh, now, I will be honest with you, uh, the first batch that came out weren't that great. The last batch that came out, because they moved it to a different country to, to bill was not great. But the year we got them, they were wonderful and they worked great. So timing is everything.
How long will it take you to get some in if we approve it?
Um, well, Unison has them in stock, so it won't take long for them to get it to us. Um, to give you an idea, they know that we're going forward with the ones in July, so they've already shipped those to us and won't bill us to July for them because they need to get them out of their storage area and stuff. So we'll be getting those in and, uh, the good thing about getting, the sooner we get them, the better, is that we get familiar with them because then we have to go out and train our officers of election on how to use them. And so we have to be the experts on it.
And to follow up on that, our, our plan from a staff perspective was to give Randy the opportunity tonight to address the board, answer questions, and then at our first May board meeting, we'll have a resolution on the agenda for you to consider. If you recall, this was part of the discussion when we were talking about the use of the win file money.
Right.
So we did not have that on the agenda tonight, but we'll, we will have that on the first May agenda.
Okay.
So after we do all this, Randy, then everything will be in compliance?
Yes, ma'am.
And tell me again, like, how many regular machines do you have, like for the rest of the county, not counting the one for the disabled?
Uh, we have 27 right now.
27?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll get 12 more.
12 more, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, then with the, um, OVIs, we need 30 of those.
30.
And then, uh, that'll be it.
Okay.
That should be it. Now, we trying to think ahead. We tried to make sure that, because there was a bill in the General Assembly where they wanted you to have two of the, um, optical scan machines in every precinct, uh, over 2,500. And they moved that up to 3,000 and that was pretty much what our plan was so that anything over 3,000 voters is gonna have a second OVO, um, in the presidential election.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I guess that's it. Uh, need a, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you. Need a motion to go out and work session?
Motion.
Second, third.
Okay, would the, uh, clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Biz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
And I guess the, the action after this is that you will have...
We'll have information on the agenda on the May, at the 11th, May 11th meeting regarding this item as well as the other items we were discussing regarding one-time money and win file funds. That will be on as a work session for discussion and then we'll have a resolution in particular for this item, uh, under New Business for your consideration.
Any other comments from the board members? Okay. We'll move right along to New Business.
We don't have any action of the work session.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's gonna be, uh...
Yes, I understand.
Right. Okay. Uh, New Business, Subject A, proclamation, May 16th to May 16th, 2015, as National Police Week. And, uh, this is a proclamation... Uh, New Business. Subject A, proclamation, May 6th, May 10th to May 16th, 2015, as National Police Week. And, uh, this is a proclamation, uh, recognizing that week. Uh, need a motion.
Summon, Decker?
Have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Despite the things that's been going on with, uh, law enforcement across the country, I, I just think in the number that are killed in the, in the line of duty each year, uh, I think this proclamation states in 2014, 127 law enforcement officers who lost their lives in the line of duty. And, uh, I think it's only, uh, fitting to recognize our first line of defense, uh, with the proclamation. County attorneys report?
Uh, no report, Mr. King.
County administrators report?
Mr. Chair, no report this evening.
Board members, starting with Mr. King.
I just got one or two things. I want to tell Craig how much I appreciate him working with me with B. Doc on a few roads out there, and finally they got a few of them straightened out, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to go on record to say how much I appreciate every volunteer here in Montgomery County. I know Ryan was here tonight, but I appreciate every one of them. They do a lot of hard work, a lot of hard training, and I sure do appreciate it. As far as Sheriff's Department, I, Robbie back here, Robbie, I appreciate everything y'all do for volunteers when you're on the scenes and things. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Biggs?
Um, just two things. I wanted to tell you that the New River Community Services Board meeting last Thursday night, um, we had the staff come in, the supervisors, and they shared with us exactly what their jobs were from all the different programs, and it was really amazing that there's so much out there dealing with mental health issues, you know? And we can be very, very proud of our staff and the community services board. I mean, they, I think they do an excellent job, and I also think that, that going to that and seeing the people and their responsibilities was really, um, interesting. They did, uh, report that they had covered, you know, the, the two particular incidents with the children, the one in Elston, I think I told you about last time, and of course the one in Pulaski, and how hard that is, and how hard it was, um, on law enforcement and the volunteers that helped in the search for no one, particularly in Pulaski, and what they were able to, to do to help the people that had been involved in that. And then the other thing is, I just wanted to, um, state that I wanted to thank, um, Chair Brown for recognizing our along, and, uh, I just wanted to say that I served with her for four years on the board, and, um, he was a personal friend for a lot longer than that. And I know that, um, he'll be missed by his family and friends, and I can still hear his words in my mind, you know? And, uh, and I wanted to say I'm glad that Chris is a member of our board and is directly related to Mr. Long. So, anyway, thank you for doing that, Bill.
Supervisor Perkins?
Um, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to remind everybody that May 13th is, um, what's called the Food Truck Rodeo at the Hotel Floyd. We're going to, uh, have the New River Valley Regional Commission, it's always been called.
CDC.
PDC, but I'm going to have to get used to calling it the Regional Commission. Um, and it's called, um, Food Truck Rodeo. It's, uh, very casual attire, it's going to be down in Floyd. Uh, you've got, you, you got an invitation, I believe, uh, just recently on Friday to help you figure out where it is and where to go and how to get there. Uh, there, we're going to award, we hope yearly, a couple of, uh, people as, um, Champions of the Valley and Citizen of the Valley. And this year, our Champion of the Valley is Rick Boucher, and the Citizen of the Valley is Ken Anderson. It's $35 a person. Um, and at the same time, there are four, uh, different companies that thus far will have trucks there, and it's One Toasted by Casey, Appalachia Dicious, uh, Delicious, excuse me, Chateau Marsette, and The River Company. And if you like bluegrass music, there's going to be plenty of that. Uh, it's live music by Gravel Road Bluegrass, Bluegrass Band and local crafts will be there too. Now, if you all know...
We had them in Shoville this last week, and they are good.
Yes, so it's Gravel Road, Bluegrass Band, and it's going to be fun.
The oldest one is 14 years old.
Kid.
And they're really good. They, they're the ones that played at the open house for the Auburn Middle, New Auburn Middle School too.
Right, right.
They're, they're really good.
They are good.
Trust me. I, I go to a lot of bluegrass, but they're good.
Well, this is going to be very...
They're going to make something out of themselves.
Thank you. This is for, um, oh, I don't know, planning district individuals and, uh, a guest, and also we'll be celebrating elected officials to be there with the guest, um, and planning commission chairs too. So, uh, just be sure that, you know, we let, um, Vicki and the rest of the, um, staff that does, uh, that takes care of these things to, to, uh, get us there. And there is also going to be, um, something called Thai This. I've never eaten Thai food.
It's very good.
And it's T-H-A-I, this, and it does say a cash bar under Thai This, so I'm not sure just exactly what all that is, but nevertheless, um, and I think it'll be a great night, because it's in a couple of different locations that are very close to each other, and, and it'll be casual address, of course, and a very comfortable, uh, atmosphere. It's something we've never really had before, so I think it'll be a great way to celebrate, um, what we want to celebrate, which are the people that get the awards, but more than that, we don't have to, you know, not every planning district commission person's going to have to get up and say something, uh, but they can if they want to. So I hope to see all of you there. Um, I, I'm looking forward to it. I don't think I've ever been to anything like this, and, and, um, I think it'll be great fun for us. And then the other thing was, again, thank you, Bill, for our along. I didn't serve with him as long as Ms. Biggs did, but it was a couple of years there, and yes, I have his words still in my head. And so, um, I, I appreciate, um, having, um, known him and his family. That's all.
Supervisor Tuck?
Well, Ira was my great uncle, and, uh, he gave me this pocket knife. And he gave it to me, and he loved to give my dad a hard time. He said, you know, listen, Chris, and we'll give you this pocket knife, which is a lot more than I've ever given your dad, because I've only given him a hard time. Um, but, uh, one of the biggest honors of my life, but Ira was a hardcore Democrat, went to every Democratic meeting he could possibly get to. But when I started running for the board, put my sign out in front, meant a lot to me.
Yeah, right in his front yard, everyone could see it on Price's Fort coming and going.
Not in my district, did he? He wasn't in my district.
He was in Bill's district. That was a good way for people to know that you were.
Good, ma'am. Is that it, Chris?
That's it.
Mr. Gabriel?
Uh, two very brief things. Attended the, uh, the EDC meeting, uh, this past Thursday. We had an update on the Virginia Tech master plan, a lot of, a lot of building going on there, a lot of plans for the future. Also attended the tourism meeting and afforded you an email on May the 7th. There's the Montgomery County Familiarization Tour. Um, it's basically a get-to-know Montgomery County tour. Um, there's still some spots available. Um, they're going to start out in Metta Brook at the Metta Brook Center, uh, hear a nice presentation about the museum, go to Christiansburg, see some of the sites in downtown Christiansburg, and then head over to Blacksburg, and then I believe out to Reiner at the end there, kind of do a big loop through the county. Um, it's primarily intended for, um, for, uh, people in the, in the service industry here in the county, but it's open to anyone. So if you know people who might be interested in that, it should be a really, really nice time, and there's a registration link and email, so, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Creed, Supervisor Creed?
Uh, yeah, I want to say something in this. On numerous times that I've had the honor of being before some of these volunteers that we have, there's always one thing that I have to say that I hold true and think that it is very well something that I believe in as much as anything I've ever believed in, and that is that there's nothing more noble than to volunteer. And I truly believe that, and I hope that, uh, all of these young folks, uh, are rewarded And with that, other than, oh, I will, I will tell you that about the kids that were down there playing. There's a 13-year-old child that is the MC of the whole plane.
She's got some spirit.
You'll wake up when she gets home, though.
She's got some spirit to her, doesn't she?
She has.
That's wonderful.
She's slick.
Thank you. And I wanted to follow up on your thing. May I just say something about him?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't mean, I don't think I've really spoken to Greg about this, but I've been for a long time part of, uh, a group called Leading Lights, and it is a, a group that is, was originally formed by the German club to recognize community volunteers. And each year, uh, it's been about seven years or so, it happened, uh, in the aftermath of the April, uh, problems that were at Virginia Tech. So, um, there was a great response from volunteers to that particular situation that we had at Virginia Tech. So, uh, we have for over the last seven, eight years, uh, chosen five people to be the, uh, community volunteers from among 55 nominees about every year. It's the most amazing thing, because you just really, some of these are your neighbors, and you just don't even realize what they do and how they give their time to the community. So I have asked, um, Dick Arnold, who is the individual who's in charge of this whole thing, to get in touch with Craig and see if sometimes he can come and bring, or even ask some of the volunteers that were chosen this year of the five. There's a elementary, there's a secondary, there's a college, and, um, two, um, uh, two to three, um, volunteers from the community at large. And to let you know, because I think some of our rescue squads and, uh, fire squads and, and others may not get, uh, well, let's say, a nomination, uh, because sometimes people that are in those groups, they don't write out, you know, and don't know that they can be a part of it. And every part of the community where we have volunteers, uh, we encourage people to please nominate people that they know have gone the extra mile, uh, in serving our community in Montgomery County, Floyd, Bradford, Giles, Pulaski, so the whole area that we call New River Valley. It's not just, uh, Montgomery County. Um, and I hope you will, uh, look at, uh, this whenever Dick can work it out with Craig, and that when we turn around for next year, I'm sorry, I won't be part of the committee next year, because, um, I, I just have too much at home to take care of at this point. But I, I do think it's, it's a very worthwhile thing, and volunteers, um, I grew up in a city and I didn't know what it was to have a volunteer rescue squad or a volunteer fire department, but when I came here in 1962, I found they were here, and I've been totally amazed at how much time and giving of self that, that they do. So, anyway, I'm sorry to take up your time, but I did want to talk about that.
Okay. Uh, I guess it's down to me. First thing I want to, uh, inform you about is that last Wednesday, we kicked off Soul Rise Montgomery County down in the lobby there, and I guess probably about a half, uh, 125-plus people in, in attendance.
Good crowd.
Yeah, nice, good crowd, uh, there, and, uh, food trucks were there, and, uh...
Thai This was there.
Yeah, and so it was a, a great turnout, uh, and it's, I guess it's more or less like a partnership. Blacksburg started it like a couple of years ago, and now it's like a partnership for, uh, Christiansburg and all the citizens of Montgomery County. Frye, you attended a wonderful ribbon cutting at, uh, In Motion. I guess we sort of talked about Zappy, you know, that's the, that's the company there, but, uh, uh, we got a tour of the plant, looked at some of the, uh, electric motors that, uh, that's going to power buses. I mean, I mean, some triptan trailers, so these are, are electric motors. And, uh, so we had a, had a great time there, and even, even had a good lunch and, and so forth. Uh, and I don't know whether, uh, what I would like to, for this board to consider is maybe, uh, passing a resolution for, uh, Ira Long and presenting it to his family, because Ira is, uh, he, he very involved in public service authority, uh, very involved in, in, in county government, and 16 years of serving on this board is nothing to sneeze at, and, uh, I just think we need to do something, uh, to sort of recognize what he's given to this county and, and maybe do some presentation to the resolution to his family, if that's the thoughts of...
I agree.
How about if we prepare something first, and we'll bring it back?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at thumbs, because...
Yeah, thumbs, yeah.
Am I allowed to participate? You give thumbs.
Yeah, you give a consensus, yeah.
And I believe, like, if you go back in the record, I know Judy has it, when he had, received his resolution when he retired from the board, all of the different things, I know we listed, because it was a long list of things that he had done at the time, so we probably still have that record easily attainable.